No. We'll move along. The approval of the N S with six.
Twenty twenty.
Do I have a motion?
So.
Second. We move on to Mr. Volter and the next thing by Mr. Barry. Do we have any comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You men?
AI.
AI. Move along. We have a second reading. The amending and regulating of use of motor vehicles that relates to littering is a second reading of the number five.
City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance number twenty twenty number five. An ordinance amending and regulating the use of motor vehicles as it relates to littering and release of foreign materials on city streets and sidewalks. And that's that I agree.
That was the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty number five. Do we have any comments?
I have a question, like this clarification.
Yes, sir.
What is the difference between this ordinance and the other ordinance?
As to the regulation of motor vehicles that's littering? So the difference in that is we've added some more provisions to be more stringent on people taking materials or water off of property and then the other one is make sure the trucks actually keep their lids closed even if they're empty. You know, some more of the interstate, so you might have trucks that's got a empty load or they're open, so it's still raining and litter flying out.
So that is under section thirty seven ninety nine.
Correct, correct. So it's just an amendment, it did exist, did something, some more fashion, that's just. This is an amendment to essentially tailor some situations that we're dealing with here in the city that are getting compliance to the city administration and the enforcement officer. This, so we should never tailor for that.
Okay. Of course, I have two questions. As I have is Michael, I know you've been busy with the city, I don't think you want to. In the meaning that, you know, virtually me and you, me and Mr. Councilor, I asked you, who initiated this or where does it initiate from? And unfortunately, I don't think you're back to me like you said, you were busy, but you tell me where this initiated from? And the next question. I know what this is about. It's about trucks coming through the city, but who's going to enforce it? Because my personal opinion, this is not going to allow to kill a man because we can enforce it.
Why, why not?
You can maybe get our. That, that against our department. We have so many other things, you know, we may even.
Well, if a couple of retailers being. Uh huh. And that vehicle gets on top of her, does hurt her, it's fine. I would think if our police officers see that, take a made determination to side them.
That and officer laws is going to go ahead and fill a lot of that gap. Because the other thing that ordinance does is it allows you to go after the property owner where they're ingressing, egressing out of. So let's say that it's down at the Marine or anything like that, then we can go after the property owners, developers, and hey, look, and they will then make sure their trucks are going to comply with those requirements.
So.
This gives us a deep.
The owner of.
Where the ingress, egress occurs at, too.
Now, someone will answer my other question. Initiated new confidence.
No, it actually was initiated by Officer LaHila, the enforcement officer. He had, he's come across this issue a few times and needed a solution because his current ordinance is more covering.
Very good.
Can I also have a question on this?
Ms. Reg.
How is this different from the existing state law?
Because that is still a. It's a business strategy.
Correct. But, 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 and I checked this out myself whenever I was drawing up this ordinance or correcting it. Under state law, you only have to be covered if you're not carrying your load. You don't have to cover that. If you're like. You're not on the interstate all the time with that are uncomfortable, because they're carrying their load. But this goes past that and makes you have to cover a load. It makes it also the property owner's responsibility what's coming in and out of their lots.
So we're really saying, you're really saying it's not the truck driver, but the development down there will.
Basically, it's just too large, we can go ahead and.
Okay.
Mr. Burns, I have this officer Wiles pulling people over.
I just. You know, you know.
No, no, you have one question. I appreciate him.
I'll make the motion to adopt twenty twenty one number five.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have any comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carter. Or Ben?
Aye.
Or Lynn?
Aye.
He said aye. I believe so.
Yeah, he did.
And Mr. Volter?
Aye.
Or Mary?
Aye.
Or Bazler?
Aye.
Hi, Shannon. Yeah, I'm sleeping. Before we move along, Mr. Reg, give me a favor, please, off the microphone on.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, sir. Apparently, I was causing some tease back.
No problem.
Moving along, we'll have to move to the second reading of twenty twenty number seven, amending of the twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget. Good luck, sir.
City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance number twenty twenty number seven. An ordinance amending the city of Dayton, Kentucky budget for the fiscal year July first, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the city to the full extent authorized by KRS eighty two point oh eighty two and interpretative case law.
Excuse me, gentlemen, can you please all be on mute?
The second reading of the twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget. Do we have a motion to accept? Some move. Remember Volter's moved. Accept, accept. We have a second. A second.
I will second.
Remember, Mary is accepted to the second. Do we have any comments?
I want to question this, how long ago did we get? Is it, are we doing this rather like amending this budget or amending the budget?
It's not uncommon that most cities, they'll have, you know, that adding. The year budget amendment to make sure everything goes in line.
This seems late, we're getting ready to try to adopt another budget amendment, okay.
Correct, but it's not, it's not so late that it's uncommon because, you know.
Do we have any comments concerning the reading of the twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget? Comments are closed, can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Ledger?
Remember Burns?
Aye.
Remember Lynn?
Aye.
Remember Volter?
Aye.
Remember Neary?
Aye.
Remember Bazler?
Aye.
And then what's right up top?
The ayes have it unanimously. Budget passes. Second reading is twenty twenty number six of adopting the twenty 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 one budget. Ms. Ledger.
City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance number twenty twenty number six. An ordinance adopting the city of Dayton, Kentucky budget for this fiscal year July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the city to the full extent authorized by KRS eighty two point oh eighty two and interpretative case law. This includes the general fund, the municipal revenue fund, the parks fund, economic development fund, Charleston Park Trust Fund, the fifth fund, and the capital outlet fund.
Thank you, Ms. Ledger. Do we have a motion to accept the twenty twenty number six, the adoption of the twenty 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 one budget?
I must accept.
Mr. Volter has made a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second amendment or Neary. Do we have any comment? Please, sir, with your comment.
We're asking ourselves to take four million dollars out of reserves. Four million dollars out of reserves. Plus, and we're not going to buy another police vehicle this year. And we're going to have to amend this budget next month or the next after. Because they have some other things coming up. I think it's ludicrous that we're going to pass this budget. And gentlemen, there's going to come a time when we don't have that reserves anymore. Be cautious enough. So I will be voting out.
We are. Accept the budget.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
On workman's comp, is there a reason that workman's comp has gone up? Or is that just a generalized increase?
There is a reason, we've had several claims in the last couple of years and it's caused our comp down here rate to go up. However, one of the positive things that we'll have if we come back and amend the budget is I've actually reduced that by twenty thousand. We're going to go with a different carrier. That just came up last week, so it's not reflected in the current budget, so. The reason it went up is because we've had some issues. Good news is, we've got another carrier that's going to take us on.
Besides the better rate, I'm glad we're getting a better rate, but we might want to do some kind of education.
Well, that was, that was our. Our. The reason that they took another company was willing to take us on is because our cases have cost. There's not a direct link to an amendment in the lower places. Most of the incidents in the last couple of years have been injuries as a result of chasing down, chasing down. They didn't see any incidents that had been.
Black on our partner, that kind of thing. Just in the act. Another question. This is civic activities. What is that part of the budget?
It's for the civil.
And. Terms of the new budget for twenty one. The. The. CCRS.
Is frozen, is that what I heard?
That's what I heard.
They closed it. Yeah, so they did not increase it.
That's all I have.
Or question, Mr. Volter? Do we have any other comments?
Yeah, I would like to point out a few things, sir.
Remember Neary or Judge.
I'll just go through the expenses. And the general off, general government expenses overall is down seven thousand dollars in the twenty twenty budget. The police department is down nine thousand, will be budgeted for twenty twenty. Fire department is flat. Pending an amendment. Public works does have an increase, which I think is much, hopefully, we can get another set of hands on the street. Building services, thousand dollars less. Waste collection obviously stays the same, these are all about expenses by the department. Under professional services and grants, basically a hundred fifty thousand dollars less than last year, almost two hundred thousand less than last year. For a net expenditure decrease of two hundred thousand dollars, over two hundred thousand dollars from last year. I would like to applaud the city administration for controlling expenses and basing next year's expenses pretty much on what we spent this year. I know in years past, it's been purposely inflated with expenses, I think this is a much more realistic budget. I do have the same concerns as Councilman Burns as far as tapping into our reserve. But if we do things right. Things right, we don't have to do that. And I applaud all the department heads also for saving this during the year. That's all I have, sir.
All right, Michael, can you tell me how much is left in our reserves if you pass the motion today?
I believe we finished fiscal year one point seven billion dollars. What's the minus maybe?
Between one point six, one point seven.
Yeah, I didn't look at it last minute, but.
That's a recognized.
No, it's general.
And in years past, Mr. Giffen, I believe, what has been that carryover or planned tapping out of the reserve, somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand in years past?
You mean, what has it been on the budget?
Yes.
Yes. It's been all over the place, it's been as high as four hundred.
Four hundred, I can.
It's been as, I think this is, this year, maybe as low as it's been ever, but it's usually been around two hundred to four hundred.
Just wanted to clarify that, thank you, sir.
Do we have any comments about the second reading of twenty twenty number six, the budget for twenty twenty one, or twenty twenty, twenty twenty one? I'm not completely able to roll call.
Remember Lynn?
Aye, if it's me.
Mr. Lynn, I can't hear you, you give a thumbs up on the.
Aye.
Volter?
Aye.
Aye.
Remember Bazler?
Aye.
No.
The ayes have it, the roll call for the reading of twenty twenty number six passes. So we move along. First reading of twenty twenty number eight, heading for compensation and number of authorized.
City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance number twenty twenty number eight. Ordinance twenty four, twenty nine nineteen, well, well, setting for compensation under authorized provisions for employees under the Dayton job classification system. This adds a new position, a neighborhood project. This is first reading.
This is the first reading. And we move along to the first only reading of twenty twenty nine. Emergency ordinance adopting annual budget for this fiscal year, twenty twenty one. Good luck.
City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance number twenty twenty number nine. An emergency ordinance adopting City of Dayton, Kentucky annual budget for this fiscal year July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for this city to the full extent authorized by KRS eighty two point oh eighty two and interpretative case law.
Do I have a motion to accept the reading of twenty twenty nine? Number nine?
Some move.
Who, remember Volter?
I'll second.
Second by member Neary. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Attorney Edge, why are we doing this and why we haven't read, read one, one of those? Since I've been on account, whenever we've had an ordinance, we've had a, had a.
We. What we're doing is we're reading about what we call emergency, which is a process under statute where you can only read once and pass an ordinance due to extraordinary circumstances, COVID nineteen being the extraordinary circumstances. In this particular option, because we haven't, we've been meeting virtually, this provides us a secondary coverage of the exact same ordinance that we just passed for the budget, but it provides a secondary coverage just in case for some reason it was ever mean legal scrutiny or challenge that way to protect the city. But it's not the first time we've ever done one by emergency, we did one a few years back that was by emergency that was actually, I want to say it was a change to noise and sound and building, something, something along those lines that we have. We've done by emergency, but it's, it's very rare that we do it, it's supposed to not be used except for in extraordinary circumstances. I would reckon that the council would agree that that's probably one of those extraordinary circumstances to warn it.
I thank you for your excellent issue, but I don't remember it.
I didn't, I didn't remember it until I started looking into it.
So normally, this would be in two different meetings.
Correct.
A first reading and a second reading, and instead of having the second reading, we're doing it as an emergency reading.
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I interject for one second? Hello?
Do you have any comments?
Oh. Can you all hear me?
One second.
Can you all hear me?
Mr. Bazler, I was just, you know, part of the emergency base, not what's behind us, but also for what might happen going forward that we don't understand or know.
Understood.
Remember, Bazler, you have some questions? Got it.
I need you guys to turn off your microphones when you are not talking because we can hear your audio on each one of your microphones. So only when you're talking, turn on your mic, please.
Try my best, sir.
Jeff.
Jeff. Thank you.
Other than that, Mr. Bazler, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments concerning the, the reading of twenty twenty number nine?
I have one question pertaining to the budget and not a separate issue, but for the record, Mr. Getz, one of you expect to get the PPA assessment on the property guidance of the city?
Oh, I have a rough idea of what it is right now. But they have delayed the release of those numbers for ninety days, so typically I get those in this month, usually the end of this month.
Right.
So I wouldn't expect the finalized numbers to come until September, October.
I, I was wondering if there's going to be a delay on.
There's a delay, but we have a general idea of what it's going to be, and it shouldn't change too much from there.
And that delay is mainly going to be because of the appeal procedure, they weren't able to initiate that process.
Remember Bazler, do you have anything else to say? He's shaking his head in a negative fashion. Does anybody else have any comments concerning twenty twenty number nine? Understood, sir.
I can't hear Bill at all. Can someone please tell me what Bill is saying?
Bill said, Bill said that he appreciated Mr. Reg's advisement, but he would not be voting for this in the future.
Okay, just FYI, Bill's audio says connecting to audio and we cannot hear Bill.
He countered with, he can't hear you.
Okay, listen.
Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments, I believe, have I satisfied everyone's comments? Okay, I want to make sure everyone's voice is heard. We had a motion by a member Volter and a second by a member Neary. Comments have been closed. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Neary or Ms. Ledger?
Remember Volter?
Aye.
Aye.
Remember Bazler?
Aye.
Remember Burns?
No.
Remember Lynn?
Yeah.
For the record, it was unanimous minus Mr. Burns. So we move along, the ayes have it. The city administrators' report is next on the agenda, Mr. Giffen, the floor, Judge. Yes, ma'am.
Can you just clarify, I was just talking to you and everything was being related.
Oh, I apologize. There is another resolution, order twenty twenty number eight R as in Romeo, authorizing the filing of a coronavirus relief fund.
Adoption of a resolution of the Dayton City Council, authorizing the filing of a coronavirus relief fund, BRF, application for reimbursement of hospital expenses and BRF fund to the Department for Local Government, BLG. Authorizing the director in America execute any documents which are deemed necessary by BLG to reimburse the city and authorizing America act as authorized correspondent for reimbursement.
Thank you, Ms. Ledger. Was there, did anybody have a problem hearing that?
No.
All right, great. So the, the reading has been made for twenty twenty eight R, do we have a motion to accept?
First reading or?
In order.
It's in order.
Make that motion, sir.
Motion's been made by a member Neary.
I'll second it.
I believe Scott probably won the, won the race there, so seconded by a member Bazler. Do we have any comments concerning this?
I guess the only.
Please turn on your microphone if you're talking.
The only, the only question I have is my speaker's off. Must be years, Ben. Is when will we get a good reading on how much that possibly could be?
We have that, we're eligible for just under four hundred thousand dollars, it's three ninety five change. And I'll, I'll submit expenses for March first through June thirtieth, hopefully sometime in the next ten days or so. And then if need be, we can do further submissions for any expenses incurred July one through December thirtieth. And maybe we can submit those after the first of the year, but I don't imagine we'll need to do that as I think we'll hit the cap at some point in the year.
Okay, all right, good enough, thank you.
Do we have any other questions concerning? Do we have any other questions concerning order twenty twenty number eight Romeo?
I'm already seeing some news stories about some communities being.
Any other comments? All right, we had a motion by a member Neary and a second by a member Bazler, but I please have a roll call, Ms. Ledger.
Remember Bazler?
Aye.
He said aye.
Remember Burns?
Aye.
Remember Lynn?
Aye.
And remember Volter?
Aye.
Unanimous, ayes. We would now like to move along to the city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things I want to start with. They're both related to the budget that we just passed for fiscal year two thousand and twenty one. And for the sake of making tonight any more hectic and confusing, I'm going to try to do this as simple as possible, and then we can come back in future meetings where there's not as much stuff and we can amend the budget accordingly. The first deal's with the fire department. Since we've had the first reading and so on of our, of our first of the budget, they've realized they need a one percent contribution increase from the cities of Bellevue and the cities of Dayton to meet their needs. That is amount to nine thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars for the city of Dayton. So I'd like to ask for a motion to approve a one percent contribution increase to the fire department from the general fund for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make that motion. Asking us to amend the budget already or?
Nope, not yet. Just asking for nine thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars out of the general fund for the fire department.
Reason, reason being, uh, member Burns is Bellevue, it is, you know, we, we were working in, uh, tandem with them. They asked for a one percent increase.
Gentlemen, if you recall, my.
I can't hear Bill at all. I would love to hear this.
Me too.
Maybe unmute yours, Ben, and we can hear off of your.
I quote un- David, uh, member Lynn and member Bazler didn't hear any of that.
So Bill asked why we're only giving the five, well, the first question was why didn't we ask for this earlier? And the reason was I had asked Chris, Chief Atkins, to put together his budget, uh, assuming there was going to be no contribution increase. Uh, as member Neary stated earlier, most of our departments, uh, decreased and did not take an increase. And I think Public Works was the only one that went up and it was modest. What I told Chief Atkins was if he can make that work, that budget work, and he can got, get his guys a raise, he can move the numbers around all he wants on his individual budget, uh, to get his guys whatever he feels like he can get them. So that's what he set out to do. Uh, that's the conversation that we had with Bellevue. Uh, unbeknownst to me, Bellevue went ahead and had a first and second reading of their budget that did include a one percent contribution increase. Uh, Chris and I continued to talk to see if he could make that work. And then just within the last couple of weeks, uh, he came to me and said he couldn't, uh, make that work without some sort of contribution increase. Now, please don't mistake a one percent contribution increase does not mean his employees are getting a one percent raise. What that means is we're increasing our contribution to them by one percent. However, he can move the money around, uh, after he gets it is up to him. So what his guys get will be what he can come up with.
So he may be using that carryover.
Well, he's certainly using some of the carryover to balance his budget, yes.
How much carryover did they have?
I don't know. I think it was one thirty-six on the budget.
Okay, well, they did use carryover for the door. Sorry, sorry.
Chief Atkins and I have had many discussions on this as late as last night. Unfortunately, we didn't have any fire board meeting during the COVID because, uh, because of the restrictions. We do have a meeting scheduled for this month. Uh, the time and place will be published. One of the issues in the past and that, uh, Chief Atkins and I came to an agreement on last night, they will be providing a monthly, just the same reports that we get from our city clerk of the budget actual versus planned plus the ledger. So we will know what the cash balances are in the fire department kitty. Uh, he's gonna start that, if not this month, next month, they will be sent out monthly to all fire board members and both city administrators. So everybody gets on the same page and we're all on the same page all year long. So that should address the issue we've had now and in the past where at the end of the year, that was always a question. This will give full transparency to all the LLC budget.
Any other questions, sir? Any questions? Uh, looking out to you, council and, uh, in cyberspace, any other questions?
So I asked for a motion to approve a one percent contribution increase to the fire, fire department from the general fund. Uh, that one percent equals nine thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars.
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion's been asked by, uh, city administration, Giffen. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I will.
To Lynn? Turn your audio on, sir.
Mine is on. I said I'll make that motion.
I hear you just fine, Danny.
Turn yours on, Ben.
Danny, if you could please repeat what you just said.
I said I'd make that motion.
Motion's been made by member Lynn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second been made by a member Burns. Any comments?
Um, I would like to see if there could be a better coordinated effort between the city of Dayton and Bellevue to make sure that they're not making our decisions and kind of forcing our hand to do such.
And i- if I could jump in, sir. One of the things I'll bring it up with council again, the interlocal agreement actually expires next June thirtieth. And our fire board is, I've asked the fire board, I've asked both councils to review and to make any suggestions for improvement. This is one of them that I think we need to make is that the finance committee for the fire board should be the primary recommendation of what the budget for the next year should be. We'll see how that works out. We have to get both cities to agree to it, both councils to approve it. But I ask everybody to go through the interlocal agreement. I know it's a lot of dull reading. But we will be held to that standard for the next five years once it's approved or changed next year. That's all, sir.
My, my only question is this. I think they deserve every. I don't think.
Can't hear. No, Bill.
Need to be able to do, Bill, is to make recommendations based on needs and based on equipment issues and those kinds of things. So they are, they are, they should be just recommendations. So, you know, it's not gonna be that, hey, you need to give us this much. Here's our issues, here are, here are equipment needs, here are our problems, here are personnel issues, and we think we need this much.
I think probably what you might be looking for is when the interlocal comes up is basically some language that is fire board gives us our recommendations.
And, uh, so first, you know, I'd recommend that interlocal, fire board gives us our recommendations. This needs to be done by April. Uh, Bellevue and Dayton, it's gonna stay the same compensation rate unless before we get to budget time, Bellevue and Dayton both agree that it's gonna go up a certain percentage. If they don't both agree, then it stays the compensating rate or whatever the prior year rate is. And in that way, doesn't feel like, you know, you're getting one story versus another and you're getting basically this news seven days after the fiscal year started.
Exactly. Yeah, and I, I think what happened, so first of all, this really hasn't been too much of an issue in years past. Circumstances this year were much different. We have two communities that, you know, were, were scrambling around trying to figure out what funding they had. I think what happened is at the last minute, from what I heard, Bellevue decided that they wanted to give their employees a one percent salary increase. And I think in doing that, I could be wrong, but I think in doing that, they just did it across the board, which then would have included the fire department, which may be why, uh, the wires got crossed, uh, because every conversation leading up to that, uh, was we were gonna keep it steady. Uh, but I, but I will say in years past, uh, we're meeting in, in February and March and have a pretty good idea of what that is in March, April of every year, um, sitting down with the, the fire chief and the two city administrators. Uh, from the two city administrators, the chief's able to get an idea of what each city can possibly afford coming up. And the chief has his opportunity to, uh, spell out the, the needs of his department and we're, we're able to use the next couple of months to figure that out. That wasn't the case this year. We were all kind of scrambling around trying to figure out what was what. So I, I certainly think there are things that could be improved upon, but, uh, I don't think we would be in this issue if, uh, have this issue if it hadn't been for not being able to meet and obviously not having a firm grasp of what the finances, uh, were gonna be until uh, late into the budgeting process. So just a little bit of clarification. I think what happened was Bellevue at the last minute just did everything across the board and included the fire department in that. And that kind of is what left us in this tight spot. So I, they, they gave their, from what I heard, they were giving their employees a one percent raise. I think what they did is they're, they got, they may have gotten confused in that, uh, the one percent raise for the employees, uh, isn't the same as a one percent contribution increase. I think they just threw it on, okay, let's give them one percent. And they can get their employees one percent. I think that's what happened.
We gave our employees two percent.
Right. And I think Chris is trying to get his guys two percent, which is why that money helps, yes. Yep.
Do we have any comments concerning the, uh, the motion? Member Ledger? Roll call, please.
Member Bazler?
Who?
Aye.
Scott, you're muted.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
There's Volter?
Aye.
Member the.
Aye.
The ayes have unanimously. Administrator?
So the next discussion, uh, involves a little bit of money as well, uh, complete one eighty of a topic. Uh, I believe the mu- uh, the, the mayor, uh, has talked to you all about, uh, a mural project, um, that we're looking into. Uh, this project would be on six eighteen Sixth Avenue. Uh, forgive me, I did not write down the name of the company. Mayor, do you have that handy? Or I know Scott might have it. Just for the record.
It's, uh, if you give me a second, I can bring it up.
It's OSRS.
OSRS.
They have sent us, uh, a scope of work, uh, for a mural project on six eighteen Sixth Avenue. The, uh, total cost of project, eight thousand five hundred dollars. Mayor, I don't know if you wanna, uh, highlight anything more than that before I ask for motion. That was kind of a short, short version of, of what they're doing, but.
Uh, and thank you, Administrator. Uh, we've been working with Xylene, uh, and OSRS, uh, on creating space that is the, uh, the parking lot area of the six hundred block of Sixth Avenue. And, and, and trying to make it a more lively space, trying to bring people down the avenue, uh, in, into our central business district. I, I know over the years, we, we've done some different things with, with murals and trying to, to, to move those along. Uh, this company has offered us a, a, a very good offer, uh, for, for offering a, a mural on the side of, I, I guess what we know as the tattoo parlor, uh, it used to be Tina's Tanning. And, uh, it, it would be a placemaking space to, to bring art and, and space into the central business district. So I, I, I think it's a pretty big, uh, opportunity for us and, and I'm pretty excited about the opportunity.
Yeah, and the, um, the, the group has done extensive work across the state, maybe even across the country, very vibrant work. So as the mayor said, uh, we think it allowed a nice, uh, pop to the, the central business district, the six hundred block. The recommendation would be to take the money, the eight thousand five hundred dollars out of the economic development fund. And, uh, in doing so, the mayor would enter into an agreement, uh, with the property owner at six eighteen Sixth Avenue. Um, we'll work with Tom, uh, Attorney Tom Edge on that, uh, to make sure that the writing, uh, in the agreement, will ensure that the, the mural, uh, you know, remains for, for quite some time. At this point, um, I guess I'll open it up for any, any questions or comments before I, uh, go any further.
Well, um, I know the budget's tight and all that, and we're obviously struggling with, uh.
I know the budget is tight and all that, and we're obviously struggling with things, but to me, I think this is a wise investment. If we can improve, uh, our space on Sixth Avenue, it, it may be, uh, able to attract other investors in. The more attractive we can make it, the better it's gonna be. That price is unbelievable. Um, I know some murals are, are as expensive as twenty-five, thirty, forty thousand dollars. So if we can get something of quality for that price, that's gonna make our central business district more attractive. I think it has a lot of, uh, positives for that kind of money. So that's my two cents.
Although I think murals are great. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we're, you're asking us to put out eighty-five hundred dollars, take the money out of economic development. I've said this before and I'll say it again. Once that money's gone, it's gone. And then on top of that, on top of that, I received this from, from, I appreciate it. I, 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 I do. But it says timeline, proposal six sixty-six, deposit one thirty, a thousand dollars on seven one, and then digital content fee on seventy-two one. As far as I'm concerned, but you sent me, this is all a done deal. We're just going through some, some motions right now. Can someone explain to me why we're gonna put eighty-five hundred dollars out on a building that we don't own? You can put all the speculation on that, the owners down, but if somebody sells that building and they wanna come on and paint that, they can paint it, that's their building.
Bill?
I'm not against it, I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to be physically responsible. We didn't buy an extra cruiser this year. We let, took money out of the budget and we put took a quarter million dollars out of reserves and you wanna spend eighty, uh, eighty-five hundred dollars? It's just ludicrous. That's like buying a brand new car and can't put gas in the car. So, you know what my, what my vote's at?
Bill, uh, the, the money has not been spent, nothing's been signed. Uh, this is an execution date, uh, it's been pushed back. Depending on compound vote. So, so nothing's been executed yet. Uh, and also our, uh, not being almost in money on cruisers versus, versus economic development is an economic development fund. That's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is barely one percent of, of that money.
And you could tell me that it's, that that's been pushed back, but I will guarantee you what the vote's gonna be right now. It's gonna be five to one. There's no doubt in my mind. I'm expressing my opinion. Now, if you don't mean express my opinion, I won't. But I'm telling you, it's, it's, it's not like to take more money out of economic development because once that money is gone, it's gone.
Understood, sir.
I would argue that we need economic development and those are good dollars spent for.
Uh, I believe you might mute it, sir. Or hold on a second, please. Uh, restate, restart your statement.
Uh, I would argue that this is a great form of economic development and the funds for economic development should go towards missions of creating a place for businesses to grow and thrive in our central business district. I don't see a better use of this money. Um, I think it's a great idea.
Member Bazler, are you done? Member Bazler?
What's that?
Are, are you finished?
I'm finished.
All right, cool. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would like some clarification if I could. We ran into this with the previous mural, discuss this with Mr. Giffen a little bit. Procedurally, if we were to approve this, I appreciate that it's coming out of economic development versus the general fund. But procedurally, who will be making the design decision? It was one of the issues we had before that the design was a matter of contention. Who's going to be deciding it?
So I think it would be.
Clarify it.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Yuri. I, I think it would be best, uh, since the mayor will be executing the agreement for the mayor to have the final say on the design. I'll let him speak to it, but I believe it's his intention, obviously, to consult with people or parties that he has in mind that have creative backgrounds in order to get, uh, their input. But I, I thought the ultimate decision should probably rest with him.
With that coming back before council and the point of contention and everything. Thanks for clarifying that, sir. Now that Michael has said that, so I have a question for Mr. Mayor. Would it be, uh, the process that they might present several options that we could present to our citizens? That would give us some input on that process? Is that the way that might work or?
Uh, thanks, thanks, Member Mayor. Uh, I'd like to say that the, the, the company that proposed this that they will give us multiple options. Uh, those options I was going to present to the Main Street Board as well as, uh, the business owners and the property owner in the area. Property owner has said that, uh, he respects our decision. Uh, the business owners and, uh, Main Street Board would, would be something I would lean heavily upon. And, and make sure that this isn't a decision that's made directly by the mayor's office. Uh, I, I don't believe in that. I believe in, in democracy. And, uh, we, we would go forth with, uh, something that made sense for the business rather than just something that would be the mayor's office's own, uh, own likings.
And, and one other point on that, if I could, and Bill brought it up. Uh, I want to make sure that in any kind of contractual agreement, that there's protection for the city against change of ownership. Uh, if the owner decides they don't like its technically its building and also the long-term maintenance.
Any other, uh, questions regarding the topic? So what I'd like to ask for, and I'll, to, just to, uh, make it clear to make sure it covers what we want, I'd like to ask for a motion for the mayor to enter into an agreement with the owner of six eighteen Sixth Avenue and to allocate eighty-five hundred dollars from the economic development fund for the purpose of, uh, creation of the mural, a mural.
The motion's been made by Mr. Giffen.
Well, recommend, recommendation for a motion.
Recommendation for a motion to enter into an agreement for eighty-five hundred dollars to be entered into that property for, for a mural fund. Does anybody have that motion? Motion's been made by Member Volter. Do I have a second?
I will, Ben.
Danny, is that you saying one with it? Give me a thumbs up.
Second.
Second's been made by a member Lynn. Do we have any other comments concerning this? Comments are closing in one, two, and three. Comments are closed. Donna, can I please have a roll call? Member Lynn?
Yes.
Member Vazir?
I'm going to recuse my vote.
One more time, Member Vazir.
I need to recuse my vote.
Okay, so is.
He's abstaining.
So what's my count?
Three, one.
Uh, three, you got three in favor.
One against?
An accent, one against, and no.
So we have it. Majority vote rules, uh, the ayes have it. And, uh, the mural moves on.
Well, it was kind of a tie, wasn't it? You got three in favor, one accent, one abstain, and a no. Oh, I'm sorry.
So the ayes have it. So the ayes have it. We move forward.
Last thing I have, Mayor, is our, uh, salt bid for the upcoming winter season. Uh, we participated in the, the CAKO reverse salt auction. And the low bid was Morton's salt at sixty-seven dollars, sixty-seven cents a ton. Pretty good, uh, number there. It's been as high as one hundred and twelve ninety-eight in the previous years. As you can imagine, they probably have some salt on hand as we didn't use too much last year. So I'd like to ask for a motion from council to accept Morton's salt bid.
Michael, is this the yearly, uh, did you go in with it?
Yes, it's a, it's the reverse auction.
Yeah, we participate every year. We haven't used it every year, uh, but it's something we do, yeah.
We're pretty low on salt this year, aren't we?
Well, we're not low. We just, we didn't use any last year, so we didn't have to bring any in. So it's, we're.
Oh, they've got salt on hand for us already that we purchased. Is that what you're saying?
No, what, what he's saying is last year, they, no one bought any salt last year, even though they contracted for it. No one actually had took delivery on any because it didn't get that bad of a winter. So now all the providers have a ton of salt, so they're just trying to sell it cheap to get rid of it.
I'm just saying we're, we're low up at the, at the city garage. We don't have a lot of salt up there.
Yeah, we rarely start the season with, with them, with much, because we can't hold them.
And I am presuming that this is part of the twenty-five thousand that we just approved in the budget under forty-three zero eight.
Correct.
Up to that amount. Uh, in that case, I will make that motion to approve.
If you're a citizen.
Appreciate it. So the motion was, uh, approved and, and made by Member, Member Yuri. The second one was made by Member Burn. Do you have any comments concerning this?
I do, Mayor. I want to clarify, uh, Member, uh, Yuri's comment. So the twenty-five thousand is what we have budgeted, but technically we're not, I'm not limited to that amount. The way the contract works is we can actually purchase additional salt above and beyond what we have allocated as our, as our tonnage, uh, up to a hundred twenty percent. So it is possible that that line on, on can go over twenty-five thousand dollars, just for clarification. Obviously, we have a bad winter, uh, and we go over there are, our average tonnage. It could be subject to go over, just for clarification.
So I have a, a motion, uh, by Member Yuri and a second by Member Burns. Do we have any other comments concerning, uh, the acceptance of the Morton's salt bid at sixty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents a ton? Comments are going once, twice? They're gone. Donna, can I have a roll call, please? Danny, do you yes or no on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Yuri?
Aye.
Member Vazir?
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, Mr. Giffen, do you have anything else to report today, sir?
That's in here.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we'd now like to, uh, ask, uh, the city attorney if he has anything to report for this month.
Courts are starting to open that up, but there's still several limited processes, jury trials, things of that nature, still not in full force. Convictions, things of that nature. So if anything that's involving courts, make sure to call in advance. Here's the biggest advice I can give you. Call in advance. Make sure it's supposed to be there at once. Precautions, they need, that really goes kind of government-wide from county to state. Other than that, none of them.
Uh, Member Vazir, I'll ask you, because you're our audio file. Did you hear Mr. Edges' report?
I did.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Edges, for your report. Uh, we would like to, uh, open up the, uh, the podium for audience report. We actually, we have, we have two, uh, members of our, our, our community here and we, we applaud them for being active. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. Just to keep the.
Okay, Kathy Gordon, three fourteen Fourth Avenue. An issue that was, uh, not surprising that it came up at this particular time, given we are in fireworks season, we'll call it. Uh, but my, one of my neighbors, uh, many of my neighbors have dogs in particular. I couldn't find my cat for four hours because the noise, excessive noise of some of the fireworks was tantamount, tantamount to torture for animals. And as I understand it, are they, people who shoot off fireworks, are they not supposed to have a permit? It's my understanding that they should have a permit. If so, how many applications did we receive? Because I'm sure not permitted.
Member Giffen, I asked, uh, Commissioner, I asked you.
People that shoot off fireworks, they do not need a permit.
Do they, is there not an ordinance that requires that fireworks stop at midnight?
I believe there are some provisions in there.
So if no one's going to enforce it, and it was evident that no one was going to enforce it, when a call was made to, the Department, Police Department at twelve thirty, and I believe again at two, that we were, it was said, it's not a priority, and basically you forget it.
Was this on?
What is the point of having an ordinance if there is not going to be enforcement?
Was this on the Fourth of July or was it days after?
The fourth and, and the fourth, sure. I think on the fifth. But Danny, but the point being is that if you have an ordinance and you're not going to enforce it, either take it off the books or require enforcement. Pick one. I don't care. Pick one. So yes, I realize a bad priority compared to a fire or a major, major boom on the middle of the street. But ordinances are put in place for this safety protection and benefit of the community. If you're not going to enforce it, why have it? That's like telling a kid you're going to get a squat if you don't do such and such. Then you never execute the squat. Just saying.
Well, I haven't seen any agreement yet. I mean, if it's twelve thirty, two o'clock in the morning, I think that's, that's way too late for you.
It is. And the fact that there, since there is no, no forced compliance in any shape or form, then of course, some of the moves that I kid you not, around my one window in particular. There was one at like four o'clock in the afternoon and then they were consistent throughout the entire evening. I'm sorry, that scares the crap out of me, not to mention the animals. And I realize that that could be a bad experience for my health. So just saying. Some of that, some of the noise, you know, the noise ordinances certainly are not effective. I realize nobody has a decibel meter in their hip pocket to assess whether it's excessive. But I'm just trying to make the point is that you, you make an effort to put together ordinances that are for the benefit of the community. And then if you choose not to enforce them, they are useless. So either take them off the books or enforce them.
My biggest problem with fireworks is I love them. But I don't like seeing them started a week ahead of time and they go a week later. But that's not my biggest problem is they make a mess on our streets and they don't clean it up. And they expect our city workers, which do a fantastic job. They want, they want the city workers to clean it up. That's not fair. If you're going to have fireworks, clean your mess up, people.
Well, here's, here was something that came to mind, and I realized that in life it probably would not be effective, but I can dream. We have that vacant spot of land that's on the hillside going up Dayton Pike, allegedly a park. Why not create a friendly competition among neighborhood groups that seem to congregate for their fireworks anyway? That is a location that I'm pretty sure couldn't hit a house if they tried. Part of my concern is that because of either inexperienced people or in our particular neighborhood, there was a group of maybe fifteen people sitting, uh, and some of them were quite young, I might add, sitting probably within, I'm going to say six to eight feet of the fireworks going off, cars parked on both sides of the street. And although it was, appeared to have been done responsibly, Amber's landed on her house, landed on my house. And my concern is that if one house goes up on any of these blocks, we're losing half a block easily. Because we're too close together, there are too many opportunities for disaster. And it's by the grace of God, we haven't had it. These people are not trained by any official organization that I'm aware of, but that's part of my concern about not making an effort to enforce the ordinances that we have. Because there's absolutely no threat, no, nothing to prevent a disaster. Nothing. Because you don't enforce the ordinances we have.
And, and, and Ms. Gordon, to your credit, I, I will say that, uh, Beverly Dayton Fire Department this week on Fourth of July put out a fire. Uh, that may, may or may not, at that time of night,
Yeah.
Uh, you have to figure it out, I guess, and they, and they will, investigators. That night. I, I, I take your, uh, I believe all council, take, take your concerns to heart. It, it's hard for our police to, to release that because a boom goes up and all of a sudden they're in their backyard.
I get it. I do. But there has to be some means by which to try. Because again, with, seriously, take it off the books if you're not going to make any concerted effort to enforce it.
Somebody, I don't know who, obviously because I couldn't see it when it was happening, let off a bunch of explosions that lit, lit right next to my window at two o'clock in the morning.
I swear it wasn't me.
One you? All right, I'll take you off the, uh, suspect list.
I'm too, I'm too afraid of the danger. I, I had a cousin who lost a couple of fingers off a hand from fireworks when he was a young kid. And so I, as a result, I won't go near him if I can help it. I only sit outside and watch him to see that my house doesn't burn up. Second, thank you for at least taking into consideration the fact that we have the ordinance. Please enforce it or delete it. Do something.
There's reports all over the country, the same exact report.
It seems to me that fireworks, I have never heard so many and so loud. Some of the fireworks were, were rosy green. And, but available over the counter. And I think because a lot of communities canceled their Fourth of July fireworks, people were pent up because of the quarantining and this was their first chance to gather. Uh, the nice weather thing, the only on the Fourth of July. Uh, I have never heard displays like that before. Uh, they were spectacular. They were scary for a lot of people.
If they go right, they're wonderful.
If they go right. The fireworks tents were sold out on Thursday. Normally they have a last segment on the Fourth of July. So the problem was not just in Dayton. I saw complaints from every community across the river, across the country. Very unusual situation, as the mayor said. I don't, you don't have a hundred thousand to do that night to really catch everybody. Now, I will commend my neighbor who had a party and fireworks. He was out there in the morning with a blow in his room and cleaned up even the lawns. Someone was a debris cone going into. I drove around Sunday morning and I saw, and started picking up, and I, this is true with this. I think maybe for next year, we emphasize that people respect your neighbor, the timeframe, and and I think that needs to be a community guideline or emphasis, trying to legalize it. I mean, can't take it off the books. That, that would be wild west. And, but the other extreme is, the other extreme is how do you enforce it when every block in town has fireworks going on? I, I think if we were to emphasize with people, hey, in a set amount of time, respect your neighbors, watch for the debris coming in the neighbors' yards and clean up that path.
That sounds great, but the same people who are irresponsible in other ways tend to be irresponsible. And if their yard looks like crap, I'm willing to bet so does the front of their house that they did fireworks. Just saying. And I appreciate it, but it, it is extremely frustrating when you know that if you call, when there is a, I'm going to say a consistent on a holiday weekend violation, you know that there's no point calling. Because nobody's going to do anything about it anyway. So it really kind of defeats the purpose of having any ordinance for that purpose alone. And I appreciate and understand, you can't have, you know, calling the National Guard to try to pick up people who are setting off fireworks. That's a bit ludicrous, like, but it gets increasingly frustrating when the time period of which the fireworks are dispensed is elongated to essentially be the summer season as opposed to a holiday.
You know, Kathy, I'm telling you, humorous, and I use that, that word, I like to use humorous. Humorous, we do have an ordinance. But at one time, it happened this year, I don't know if it happened last year, we still allow fireworks to be sold within the city.
Yep.
And we collected a $10,000, Michael, was that simple, 1,000? So we sold a permit for $1,000, condoned, and it's a, so, so that's humorous, but it's not a humorous.
Exactly. So I appreciate you at least thinking about it because I gotta believe that there is a way that is equitable and fair. And still keeping in mind that, as you, as you well know, a good part of the city is, is not brick and mortar. It is side, aluminum siding and
Wood.
It doesn't take much for, to lose a block, not to mention the people on it. So if there's some remediation that is possible, or at least some consideration, I would urge you to consider options. Okay, totally different subject. And I do want to say thank you for meeting with me. I wanted to understand it better. But the bottom line is, from my point of view, is that I like the idea of a new, I don't like the idea of the city paying for it on private property. I do have an issue with that. Because otherwise, I would say, here, have a ton of my garage, have at it. And here's, here's a bucket of paint and give me $5,000, I'm good with that. But it's private property, that's where I have the problem. I realize that has nothing to do with it, because you're going to do it anyway, but nonetheless. And when it comes to the budget, there the concern is, and obviously the older I get and the fact that I'm retired and I don't have an opportunity, apparently, an opportunity to make a significant amount of money at this point, I have to conserve every dime I have. And I sincerely hope that the city is mindful of the fact that essentially the reserve fund is there not for anything other than absolute necessity. And my suggestion or thought process is thoroughly examine, and I mean thoroughly, examine grants that we go after. Because the money that is required, that money is not free, that's taxpayer money, and secondarily, it requires a contribution. The contributions that we have put out for grants is substantial. It's not a buck 22. So I would urge you to be mindful of the fact that, yes, some of these projects are beautiful and they're great from a public image standpoint, but from a taxpayers' point of view, or my taxpayers' point of view, because I can walk down, pretty much on a sidewalk and say about three or four different things that maybe, as a city, to help unify existing neighborhoods would be beneficial to the morale and the look of the city overall. There's more to the city than Main Street. There's more to the city than Manhattan Harbor. Boulevard, whatever it is. So, I've lived here almost 15 years, and it gets a little frustrating when you see, I'm going to call it, the city get all the attention and all the dollars, or so it seems. So please consider looking at additional or different avenues of education for the city that may not require a grant, or if there are grants available for utilizing old neighborhoods as opposed to creating a new bike path. I can't afford a bike. So I guess what I'm saying is, please, keep in mind everybody else in the city, not just the developers, not just, you know, these wonderful pathways to wherever, I don't even know where they go. But just don't forget the rest of us, please. And I think that's it. Oh, one other thing. You made mention of a new position. What is a neighborhood coordinator and for what purpose?
Mr. Gordon.
There are a couple of special projects that we'd like to get done, that I think maybe start to address some of the things you just said, to deal about the areas where we can figure out what that looks like. Above and beyond, and I have, and some of our staff have the time to. So what we're looking at is possibly creating a part-time position that we could allocate special projects to. So that's the simplest version of it. We're still kind of working towards some of the final plans.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me speak.
Ms. Gordon, I'm glad you spoke, and I'm glad you spoke towards the end of the meeting. You are the mayor of that, so I appreciate you. Anybody else, there's only one other person, would like to speak? Before Zerzer? Alright, the, the Audience's discussion is now being closed at 1, 2, and 3. Moving on to unfinished, does council have any unfinished business?
Just like to, any, any update on the timeline for the Dayton Pike project?
No real update. We've been hammering our way at the state to get, get that through. That's kind of where we are on both, on both the Riverfront Commons project and the sidewalk project.
So is that going to be an issue for us with this COVID thing? The state's just going to be?
I mean, it's certainly an issue, it certainly could be an issue in getting it through. I think they have a majority of not all of them working from home. I mean, you would think with non-locked construction projects going on, they could get some of them through. Early works through, but are going into construction.
We've got all the nuts and bolts in play. We're just waiting for them to say, yay.
For both of them, we're waiting for them to go into construction.
Because I, I, I mean, once it gets to a certain point, we're not going to be going into construction. As of the weather. Alright, I just wondered.
I think Bob did have some progress last week in terms of figuring out where something was on someone's desk in Frankfort, Kentucky, that's working from home. That seemed to maybe get it moving in the right direction, but no promises, it's a little unknown right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Volter. Do we have any other unfinished business? I'll check people in, in presence here, then we'll move along to outside. Member Burns? Alright. Anybody else in this business? Anybody out at your house, socially, do you have any business that we want to speak of unfinished? Alright, that's closed. We will now move on to new business. Presence, I'll ask first, and I believe it's Burns might have something you want to speak about.
I wasn't going to bring it up, but since Ms. Gordon brought it up. I, I guess my first question to you, is it a contract employee or is it going to be a, a permanent employee?
It would be a, a permanent part-time employee with the understanding of, I'm going to make sure, it would be a permanent, part-time employee that would specifically focus on specific projects that we outline and likely will run by you all. If and when those projects are done, we don't, you know, we, we probably will not see the need for the position to continue unless you all feel that it has been beneficial and should continue. So it's meant to just accomplish, a couple of special, special projects we have in mind. I'll be sharing those with you here in the coming weeks as we lead up to the second reading. But it actually, I, I think will focus on some of the things that Ms. Gordon mentioned in identifying specific needs in specific neighborhoods. There was a reason we put neighborhood coordinator in there because we have a very, a wide variety of neighborhoods that differ, and we need to focus on those, and they all have different wants and needs and opportunities. So I'm kind of glad you brought that up and glad you asked, because that's kind of what we, we want, some of those things, we'll focus on that special project.
I guess my question is, if it's, if it's just, it's going to be a full-time, part-time employee, and you can terminate them at will, why wouldn't you make them a contract employee? Just give them a 1099, that means you don't have to pay them any benefits or anything, because if, if they're, they're allowed to get benefits if they're a, a full-time, part-time employee.
No, they will not get, they will, they will not have benefits.
Okay, okay. This is where we get, we'll go, oh, here we go again. And we talked about the pay scale will be anywhere from $15 to $21 an hour. Now I'm going to go the low end. At $15 an hour, that's going to be approximately, if he or she, whoever it may be, lasts a year, that's $15,000. Where's that money coming from?
So I don't know if that math is correct. So the, what you might getting, be hung up on is, it's 20 hours per week, but it's going to be project-based. And the projects are going to have, are going to specify at least an outline of the estimated number of hours to complete. Like I said, if we accomplish, you know, the projects that we set out, it's not, it's not our intention for the, for the role to last forever. Initially, we thought maybe just through the end of the year, or maybe just through one of our biggest projects that we had in mind. Maybe it's through two projects. It's a, you're kind of narrowing that down, but it's going to be based on specific projects and specific hours for those projects. So we can control the funding, and where it would come from would be the general fund.
I remember when we hired Mr. Yoder. We was going to hire him for 30 hours a week as a contract employee. And council said, no, let's hire him as a full-time employee. I have no prob, I think Bob did a great job. But don't sit there and tell me that this is just going to be a part-time position and it's going to last and last and last. It's, that's a no.
Well, I don't disagree with you, Bill, in that we, we absolutely could do it on a contract. I'm not opposed to that, that is certainly a possibility. You know, it could be, maybe that is the way to go. But in terms of, of controlling it as a part-time position, we can control that, because I can control the amount of hours that are, that are utilized on a per-week basis. So we are able to control that aspect of it to ensure that it is staying a part-time job. And as I said, it is specifically project-based, so it's not like they're going to be working on 10 different things at, at a time, and we don't know what they're working on. It's, it's going to be specific tasks that have specific outlines, you know, projected deadline dates, projected hours, so on and so forth. So we will be able to manage it that way, but I'm not opposed to it being a contracted position if, if that makes more sense. It certainly can be done that way.
What makes more sense to me, though, personally, I'm against it because I fill this, this person is going to fill 20 hours a week. But maybe, I mean, maybe I'm wrong.
So, no, that's a good question. So there are a few projects that, that the mayor and I have talked about that require full commitment to those projects for a length, a period of time, you know, not stopping to do other things if you're going to get them done. A perfect example would be, one of the projects we have in mind is, we've had an historic district, a local historic district on the books since 2011. It's always been our intention to get on the national register because that opens up those properties for historic tax credits. It is, it's a very lengthy process, time-consuming, something that, that the staff, quite frankly, doesn't have time to sit down and hammer out. We would never get it done. So that was, that's kind of the point behind some of the, there's some of these projects that we, I think the, the city could benefit getting done, that we see an opportunity perhaps to use, knowing that we have some money coming in, whether it's $10,000 or $20,000 to cover this. If we can get two or three projects done, that's a great benefit to the city for very, you know, you know, low cost. We don't have to hire a full-time employee, we don't have to pay benefits in order to do so. And we can get, you know, high-quality professional work done. But contracted can be done too. So I've got to post that.
Once again, I would express my opinion. I try to be physical.
Do you have any comments, Member Burns? Can you all, do you have any other new business? In, in presence first, Member Volter? Okay, it's kind of hard to hear everybody's masked voices. He says no. I'll ask out to the socially-distanced folks, Member Lynn? Do you have any new business? He's shaking his head in negative fashion. How about Member Bazler?
No, but I would like to take this time to celebrate a new business that has come to Dayton. Takri and Ogall is now open in our city parking lot. And by the looks of it, they've been staying steadily, steadily busy with people from Dayton enjoying tacos and such. So just want to throw out a congratulations and welcome to Takri and Ogall.
Thank you, Member Bazler. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you, Member Bazler, and we will move on to Mr., Member Burns, for his comment. He has a comment.
I can't hear. I cannot hear.
Michael, open up your mic.
Someone let Bill use his microphone. We can't hear Bill.
Michael, open up your mic.
Please open up your mics to Bill. We cannot hear Bill talk. We would love to hear Bill's comments.
I mean, one time you're saying you don't want to take the parking for our existing businesses, then you're putting a, a business in there that's going to take up three of our parking spots. I don't know.
I don't think there are accusations.
I don't think there are accusations. It's true. One of the issues we had back then with trying to start our businesses on the avenues is three or, two or three years ago, was a concern from the businesses about available parking. And we had just cleared out the Sixth and Berry Park and there was all that room down there. I made the motion, which I believe was defeated, to move the trick-or-treating down there, the trunk-or-treating, down to Sixth and Berry.
That's where you headed.
I believe there, anyway, I believe there was still trunk-or-treating in that lot and I and I and a couple of other people were down at Sixth and Berry. Nonetheless, that was the intention at that point was to try and bolster our businesses. The business owners had come to me concerned because they were open during that time and that was their available parking. Now we have more parking available down in that area. The church lot, they graciously allowed the public to use that in non-church hours. We have less residents parking permanently at that Sixth Street lot, so there is more room there. I share your concerns. I see, I see too many overnight parking in that area. I think we have to look at parking in our downtown business district. It's good to have a parking problem because that means you're really busy. But how much parking is enough? And concrete and asphalt is expensive. As far as allowing them in that area, they have a truck at this point. They don't have a brick-and-mortar building. So this is a temporary situation. My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Michael, is that their intention is to open up a brick-and-mortar location in the central business district. But it is not ready yet. So to your point, it is a temporary situation. Everybody's eating outside anyway because you can't eat inside a restaurant very easily. It's worth a shot.
Michael, are you correct if I'm wrong? And I may be wrong, but.
Happens. Happens.
Four or five years ago, six years ago, someone else came to us and wanted to put a truck in and we voted it down.
Well, I'm just going to plead ignorance because I don't recall.
Well, you were the city coordinator. You was, uh.
I remember.
What Bob was doing there.
I remember.
Mr. Turner wanted to have a truck voted down.
Well, I think, and I could be wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong. And I could be, I recall it being, they were wanting to do it maybe on the street and it was a health inspection concern or something with their truck. Maybe I'm a simple.
I'm just saying, we voted one down, but this one.
I don't remember it coming to a vote, but I could be wrong.
But this one was passed without any vote.
I'll take, I'll take any heat on that and.
You don't have to take the heat. I'm just telling you that you're a lot of businesses come in and, you know, nobody asks me for my input.
So, so Bill, the reason that we did this was, and we certainly respect everybody's right to park there. We respect the Purple Flay's business to park there. This was a business development and expansion opportunity that we had where we could offer space for a company that made a commitment to moving into Dayton. So they have a 90-day lease on that space. They're paying a decent amount of money for each space to use that space. With the idea that they are not using it to pick up and move to a different city. They're using that as a temporary transition as they move into a Dayton brick-and-mortar. This is an important piece, I believe, into building our main street. It's a very little consequence to the city to give up a few spaces. And it's invigorating and enlivening that space that's kind of just a boring parking lot. Now all of a sudden we have, we have folks sitting there eating their dinner and coming in from other cities to come to see Dayton. They're not just stopping on a pound. They're coming all the way down to the middle of the city. Wouldn't we really lose it there?
I don't think they would. First off, I'm going to tell you, Ben, I don't think they're losing anything. I think it's great.
Fantastic.
But guess what? I'd like to know about it. I saw it on Facebook and I hate Facebook.
Well, just to clarify, it's a 90-day lease.
90-day lease, sir.
And they are paying quote rent on parking space.
Yes, they are. $3 a spot.
Right. And it leverages the COVID limitation so that people are eating outside anyway. And I presume there is a commitment for the brick-and-mortar, as you said. And in other instances in the past, I mean, this is a different council now. Times have changed also, but because of the city property, that any use of city property is at the discretion and approval of the mayor. Am I correct in that? Okay. So there is no council approval meeting in a case like this.
No, it's the mayor as executive authority in a mayor-council plan.
As long as there's no expenditures above and below, which is already developed.
Unless you, unless council puts some kind of ordinance or limitation.
Gentlemen, I'm telling you, I think it was great. I just, I just like to know about it. I mean, send me a little email or whatever once in a while.
Turn on Bill.
Your guys would want to campaign for transparency. That's not transparency.
Again, I'll take the heat on that, Bill, if I didn't tell you about it.
You don't have to take no heat.
Oh, you're wondering, you do? Okay, sir. Do we have any other new business? Everybody out in social business land is good. Here's good. I do want to thank everybody for their patience as far as the way these things have gone. Obviously, I think we've wanted to meet in person ever since this started. We're trying to keep everybody happy and healthy and we're doing the right things to do that. So here we are today, first time since basically the new year. So I appreciate everybody for their patience on dealing with our technical issues and all that good stuff. Wearing masks when it's not comfortable. Appreciate everybody on that. I also want to thank any council member who tonight, who couldn't make it. We hope that you are happy and we hope you are healthy and well with your family. And that is all I have. Do we have any reason for executive session?
No, ma'am.
There's no reason for executive session.
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Motion was made to adjourn by Member Neary.
Second.
Second by Member Volter. All in favor?
All right.
Any names? Any abstentions? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being with us tonight on the July 7th, 2020 council meeting in Dayton. Closed.